We also have four individuals that have signed the petition. First speaker is Patrick Davis, followed by Rachel Maestas, followed by Barbara Ruffus, followed by Alwight Lewis. And which has been called, basically, in front of me for this petition. Alwight Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. Last month, we turned more than sixteen thousand names to the city clerk, five thousand more than many of you know by now. The city hall originally required that they set the provision for this. Basically, all directive, we in our campaign designed and executed that campaign to engage our constituents to meet that goal. Quite frankly, our voters did just that. Along the way, we employed more than two dozen city residents, a small army of volunteers, many of them are here tonight to support this. And they attended more than one hundred community meetings in just under eight weeks, knocked on hundreds of doors, and deliberately attended meetings in each of your council districts so that we could proudly from here today to say that this initiative was entirely signified. The voters have made it clear that this debate should happen in polling place this November, and we hope that you will agree and honor their wishes. Last week, we obtained the city clerk's data file from the verification process, and although it took them ten days to match about nine thousand names to the city's voter file, we've been following along with their process, and we've continued that process and matched another two thousand. I want to share just a couple of examples with you tonight as examples. For those of you who can see them, I realize this may be hard to see. One example of each page is a little unique and sometimes hard to read, but in this one, for instance, you will see that three constituents, two of Councilor Gerdunio's, one of Councilor Sanchez is reached disqualified by the city. The document that the city used to verify them, you can see, is just blank for each of those people. They didn't even try. From the city clerk's office, they entered the first digits of their address, said there's no person there, and disqualified them. We went behind them, typed in the full name, and found two of the constituents and one of yours. We found another in Council District Three, Councilor Peña, Mr. President and Councilor Peña. The city mistyped the shown lady's name. We were able to find her simple search in her address in the city voter file, available from a file we obtained from the city clerk. We think there's enough evidence to move forward and support the voters' initiative while we continue this process. And we make that.
Mr. Davis, councillor, does he have a question for you?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, approximately how many were you able, you said that, please say it again for me, how many of those were you able to verify that were not verified or confirmed by the city clerk's office?
During the city clerk's process, they were able to match nine thousand names to the voter file. That took about ten days. We'd begun that process, and they were not able to match six thousand names. We'd begun that process and matched over twenty-two hundred so far. We want to caution and say that our process to sort of requalify or make that case for those voters is much more complicated than the initial decision to disqualify them or require them to contact those voters, paint a copy of each of those individual voter registration cards from the county clerk, and work with those voters to get them to the city clerk. It's a very time-consuming process, but one that we've been committed to doing, and we're in the process of doing. To date, we have not yet found any that requalified that have not been certified by, or not been verified at the county clerk's by the voter registration.
Okay. Can you, if I may, just wave your hand. Can you give me some reasons why, I mean, you did mention in your explanation, one reason why they may not have been found in the records. Can you give me some other reasons that possibly the city clerks of this may have, were unable to find voters?
Sure. I must say, we had, we required to get, we ultimately got their data file, which gives the reason codes that your staff did, so we don't have to speculate, because that became complicated for our staff to try to double behind us. One example, for instance, in your district, Madam Councillor, Mr. President, Madam Councillor, the city staff mistyped an address number. So this person lives at 9904 Lane Decker Road. They mistyped and left out one of those digits, and so they apparently did not find a hundred percent match. We were able to find that person by their name. The most common error, the most common reason we found so far are simply errors like that, typographical errors, or errors where they just simply appeared not to have tried, quite frankly. And there are many staffers who did, but there is a regular pattern of those who did not. There are other cases where we can easily find voters by the mailing address, and we've had this discussion, you and the councils had this discussion earlier about mailing ballots to voters. When our conversations with the city clerk's office, they informed us that they did not consider the address where the city clerk mails a ballot to a voter. It is only the address where a voter has registered at some point in the past. And as all of you know, having done elections, and as we know now, the city for doing mail-in elections, there's been a focused effort by this city and this council to update mailing addresses for voters so that they can participate in the process. And we think it's frustrating to us that we can so easily find so many of these voters by the address that we actually send them the ballot to participate with the city, but they were not allowed to participate in the process.
And, Mr. Davis, I think the biggest error that was made, you're talking about the others, was the city clerk and the city attorney initially giving you the wrong information, and at the eleventh hour, when the signatures were due, gave you a different excuse. I'm concerned about that. I think, you know, there was due diligence on your end in getting the signatures that were required. Had that number been greater initially, we would probably have brought in more signatures. But I think it was a huge mistake on the part of the city clerk and the city attorney to give you the wrong information initially, and you went out and started bothering your petitions.
Mr. President, if I can respond briefly, we disagree. Obviously, this was a process that requires some work from the city to present that to us. It's based on a formula, as we all talked, council staff mentioned at the last meeting, and mentioned that the formula was, I think in his words, confusing at best. But it required the city clerk to make calculations based on data and canvassing results that are not available to the general public. In fact, we had to go and ask how they were maintained and found them in a locked file cabinet back to the clerk's office. And we have an in-room city clerk who has done her best to do it with the advice that I think in the direction she's been able to obtain, but it's been frustrating for us. We designed a campaign to deliver on the number that the city, city hall told us to do. We've done campaigns for years in many of your districts, and we've always been able to deliver that type of result, and we know what the results are, and that's what's frustrating us. And we appreciate that from this council, that this might be a way to honor those voters' wishes today.
Councillor, you?
Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. Davis, thank you. Thank you for what you did. We all know, we run offices here, and we base our campaigns, if you will, on finite numbers, numbers that need to be legal, and we think are viable, that we can reach. I knocked off two thousand doors, but knowing that, I think I knocked it through twice.
Wasn't that it?
But knowing that I had to reach twelve hundred and eighty people, and that was my winning number. But if somebody had told me in good faith, you know, really, all you have to do is reach six hundred, then I may have sort of thought to myself, once I can get six hundred and twenty votes, ah, because I need, only to find out after the election, or an hour after deadline, that, no, you actually needed eighteen hundred. But it was too late. And I think that is, you know, seminal to this argument, seminal to this idea that we would disenfranchise the people from the ability to substantially vote on something that they were very deliberate about. I mean, they were, they signed a petition thinking that they were being honored, and they were going to be respected, and they were going to be able to vote. And now we're telling, even worse now, we're telling not only that we do the wrong thing, intentionally or not, but we also are going to disrespect people by saying, you're going to get on cue, whether or not you're important, whether, you know, a resolution is going to be passed or not passed, whether the mayor, mayor may or may not veto it. I mean, all of these machinations that have nothing to do with honoring these folks. Sixteen thousand people is not a number that you come up with in a weekend. It's a lot of work. So, Mr. President, I think for us to now be laying numbers, not only a little bit, but a little disingenuous and acting as if the statute was made unintentionally. Thank you.
Councillor Lewis, and then councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, thank you. I think certainly we don't want to fix or confuse all these questions with disrespect of you or concurring other things that maybe councillor could, maybe we're referring to. So I do have some questions for you. And I may also say that, let me first ask you this, why, why, why city ordinance, I mean, why did you all choose of all the cities in New Mexico, knowing that there are state law implications on this issue, why not put your efforts toward the state legislature?
Mr. President, councillor, thank you for that. As you know, we've been speaking with your constituents about this and asking, you know, we've engaged with you as well about this process. As you all know, it's all, as we may all know, there is, there is momentum building in the state legislature, and has for the past few years, bipartisan support, a full decriminalization bill passed the House, and the Senate has on a number of occasions introduced various levels of legalization and decriminalization of this issue. But we, you know, our organization in progress now, and others that we work with, and some of the volunteers that work with us, have been working in city issues for a really long time because we're concerned about, quite frankly, voter apathy in local issues and local elections. And where we see an opportunity that our members came to us and asked for the chance to engage on an issue, to talk to city hall, to get involved in city elections, they asked us for an opportunity to look at this. It's very much what some people have looked at in other cities across the country, who have taken some bold action to change their local laws. We are not under any guise that this changes state law, and it presents a dilemma for our police officers, as you and I both, I was a police officer for many years, and dealt with discretion issues like this. But it's one that our voters wanted here, one our members wanted, and one, frankly, that we have almost a thousand constituents in here that have to be assigned and asked.
And, Mr. President, yeah, it does create a dilemma, certainly, for law enforcement like that, too. Because you're familiar with the law of preemption, constitutional law of preemption. And I guess my next question would be, and this is on subject, I think it's important. There was a, the last initiative was for late-term, late-term abortion ban, and those citizens, thousands of people in my district, as well as others in all of your boroughs, exercise their right to do that. The question was raised during that time, even after they overwhelmingly, you know, did what was required of them to get that question on the ballot, still even on this council and others raise the question. Actually, people raised the question of the legitimacy of that, which was, which was, let me away, you know, that people would actually raise the question of the legitimacy of people exercising their right to sign a petition and to get something on the ballot, you know, that they have the legal right to do, and certainly follow our laws, and yet still people, you know, question their validity. But the other question was simply that right there, the law of preemption, that they said, you know, why would we pass something or do something on a city ordinance level that would be putting ourselves in jeopardy, you know, on a state level, like, so that question was raised. It seems like this issue probably even more directly and clearly, you know, violates state laws, or at least, you know, there's some, there's some difficulties there, I think, as you mentioned also. So my question is this, did you support, did you support the last ballot initiative and their, and their right to be able to have that one on the ballot?
To your, Mr. President, councillor, to your question about preemption, you know, as you well know, our city police officers and then others have, currently have conflicting city and state ordinances, it's a huge problem, and they charge here in the city of Albuquerque every day, and they make those decisions, and it's within their discretion. When it comes to the previous ordinance on the abortion ordinance, we, like you, and I'm reminded, in fact, that you asked, that you were the sponsor of the Red Light Amendment Resolution, to ask for the will of the voters on an issue that this council simply, and voters were interested in waiting, and that those variations were asked of them, whether it's appropriate for the council just to put a proposition of more voting. But I will say, in the last election, we did support the process for it. We opposed the issue and worked on that campaign to, for the respect Albuquerque women's side of it, but we supported the idea, you know, our organization, for citizens to petition their government. If so, if they go through that process and fully the conversation with the citizens.
You supported that question beyond the ballot? You supported?
We supported it, the election, the process for the petition, for citizens to petition their government, and because.
What did you oppose on, what did you oppose specifically then?
We opposed the actual question. We encouraged voters to vote no on that part.
And why did you oppose the actual, actual question? No, no, because I think it was related to the fact that it was illegal in the state, the state law incident? Is that what?
I don't recall specifically until that campaign, but as you oversaw, there were a number of issues, and there were a number of these organizations.
Yeah, for the voluntary.
And the primary one was that you respected the rights of women to make your own decisions and to keep government quite rightly out of decisions by individuals. And I think that type of Western authoritarian night freedom is also incumbent in this very question about marijuana, and whether we're not harming each other, or whether the government should be taking some type of extreme action with people to be up for something simple.
I should ask you about consistency, so I appreciate you feeling that way. That's what I'm getting at. One more question. Mr. President, if, it sounds like we're going to have to make a choice, at least the county commission might have to make a choice over which questions would be on the ballot. So would you, would you put this question higher on the ballot than, say, the razor, the eight percent, what is the tax that we just passed, or, I mean, what priority would you put this, the police and fire chief, the question that would be on the ballot, the ones that we just, actually, the two that we just passed, I mean, what priority would you put on there? I think this is an important question, because that's what we're, we're going to be faced with this.
Now, I think that is his decision. Councillor Lewis, that would be the decision of the priority of this council? Councillor Wintour?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate the work that you do. You know, I grew up in the, I was a teenager in the sixties and the seventies, when you could smoke marijuana, you'd be addicted, and that was the whole big thing and all that. Then I hear, I'm recalling a newspaper a couple days ago, and the NFL is looking at the issues they're having with pain pills, and so they're looking at marijuana as a pain reliever in the NFL. It's just such an interesting change from those old days. The question that I have is, I know you talked about your signature you got, you all didn't even reach the low level that was first given to you that was incorrect. You all didn't even reach that. And we're a little, we're kind of aware of grabbing signatures, because we have to do that when we go for election. And if those signatures aren't perfect, the way they're written, you know, on the registration, they throw them out, and we deal with that every day. So are you saying that the city clerk intentionally did not count the right signatures, did they, I mean, what happened? Because you all didn't even reach the low number.
Mr. President, councillor, I appreciate the opportunity first to meet with you in your office a few weeks ago, to walk through this a little better, to have that discussion, and I really appreciate it. It's a very civil process with you and your constituents. The bottom line is, we disagree with the clerk's assertion that we only made nine thousand as a brief part of that case today. Our review to that process has led us to the conclusion that, one, there was no written, we are clear that there was no written process given by the clerk to other staff on how to validate signatures, and that where inconsistencies were found, they weren't corrected in a universal manner. And I think that's what our real concern is, in some of the issues, some of the names that I brought forward today, and then others that we continue to look for. We believe from the very beginning, and now more strongly than I did when we turned these in, that we have met the threshold that the city hall gave us by the city clerk, and by her own explanation last week, that she was focused on one party, not the other, and that she felt confident that the city attorney had approved her message, because it was right. We felt we met our goal, as I said, they gave us a goal, we designed a plan, and executed it, and we felt we made it. I'm even more confident now, as we build the actual names of those actual voters, and where they live, and whose districts they are. And so we believe that voters have done their part, and if the city hall had asked them to do more, they would, and they did what they were asked. And with respect, we don't have any personal disagreement with the city clerk, she's trying very hard, but in this case, it was a big mistake. Voters did their part, and we appreciate the opportunity this council gives to honor the will of those voters by letting them continue that process. We realize it's more incumbent on this council to take those bigger actions, but the most basic part of our process of all the questions that we're, that the council is considering, the very first one that ought to give us pause, I believe, is the ones that were created by the very people that created this.
Councillor Vice President Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess all I can say is, when all of us come out together, petition signatures, which we've all done, we were required, and we knew we were required to have, match exactly the signatory, the name, the spelling of the name, it was initial, the official cavity, the address, everything had to match perfectly with the voter ID, with the registration, the registration, voter registration. So why, Mr. Davis, are you not to be held by that means?
Mr. President, Madam Councillor, I will say, I've seen some other councillors shaking their heads, and I'll tell you, as the letter and information that we received from the city clerk and the city attorney, they must approve this process. They're required in the city charter to give us the qualifications and standards for this. Those documents, the privacy, all the sites are reported in the news, Mr. McKay, here and others, none of those qualifications were ever put forward, and in fact, during our numerous processes and communications with the city clerk throughout this process, the standard has changed from one time. And with respect, and I understand that some people may be of the impression that that is sort of a bad standard, but there's language in our charter and in our ordinance that says that the city clerk should give the widest possible latitude, in quotes, to qualifying voters and petitions. And quite frankly, our practice in the past in the abortion ordinance and the minimum wage ordinance and others that we've worked in has not been to that standard. It's been to the standard that we use to qualify those, and we hope that the city will be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I must add that obviously you have different opinions of this, because I just got an email from you today that gave a list of the people in my district who were in favor of this, and two of them had to put their addresses outside the city ballot. So that pretty much says to me that they are not voters in my district. So, you know, I'm wondering which standard is truly the one I believe, that my feeling that one must be a registered, valid, registered, valid in the city of Albuquerque. I'm assuming courts and the city clerk plan have a different meaning. Thank you, sir.
Councillor Wintour?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want, I think the city clerk is here, our acting city clerk, and I would really like to ask you a couple of questions, and I don't want to put you on the spot.
Sir Davis, I would like your excuse.
Thank you. Thank you. I just kind of want to clarify, this is a question, can you just go over the review of the names that you did, kind of what you, what you found, and how you would throw them out, and, because I know a lot of folks that you have at work in the city clerk's office, they're very good at doing it for quite a while, and, because we have worked with them too.
President, Councillor Wintour, the process, I've been in the city clerk's office for nineteen years, and I've been checking petitions forever, all yours, the mayor's. And the process that I've always known is that has to be a registered city book. So if they have a residential, we have to get them out. If they, they're not signed, of course, you know, and there's a lot of them out of town. We check every signature and on the petition. All of them aren't clear, some are, we can't read them, we try very hard, even ask other employees, you know, can we read this? We try to do every effort that we can to try to find that person in the voter registration. If that's a PO, we do not account those, if they say, ask you register voter. But we do give exceptions as well. So if they have Matt Lucero and registered, and Matthew Lucero, same address, then we will accept that. If there's a Matthew Lucero or a Matt Lucero, and they actually are registered, and Matthew Lucero had a different address, there's multiple, we can't even choose which one, which one happened. So we have to reject that one, and that's the process.
Thank you. So you've been doing it a long time?
Yes.
How many years have you been in the city clerk's office?
Nineteen and a half.
Nineteen years. Did you, did you do this one any different than you did, like, when we have our signatures go on, or any of the other ballots?
No.
Say, thank you.
Councillor Peña, and then councillor.
Just for clarity, this would refer to Mr. Zaman, and, so I think the questions are being asked about whether they were going to get this question on the ballot, and obviously they didn't have the numbers, but really what we're addressing here is councillor Gerdunio's desire to just put this initiative on the ballot, so it doesn't have, it doesn't relate to, to any of the discussion that we're having right now, am I correct?
Mr. President, councillor Peña, if that's correct, this would be an advisory question, was it just not dependent on the results of the signature petition?
Because I think they were already deemed that they didn't qualify, so that's me. Right? Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Wintour? Thank you, Mr. President. And councillor Peña, you're absolutely right, but I was, when I met, I was struggling with the fact that the numbers were given that were lower, and so my whole threshold was, well, if they meet that lower number threshold, then I'm going to have to really think about this issue and how I feel about it, because absolutely, you know, it's a wrong number, they got that number, so that's why I'm asking that. I mean, it's kind of a dilemma for me.
Councillor Harris, and then councillor, and then councillor Lewis.
And thanks, and I'm not sure if this is a question or not, I forget the city clerk, but just sort of a statement, when I got my signatures to get the qualifying contribution, which is something that's very important, and I had a walk this time in Door, and when actually hit the doors, there were registered voters, my hit rate and the previous hit rate was about ninety-five percent. When I had volunteers sort of pay signatures, I was aware the rate went way down, and I found that the city clerk was very, very accurate. I just can't believe the discrepancy that the other gentleman was talking about, I just don't think it exists. He's not in my experience, and I've done this several times also, that if you use a poor process, you get poor results. If you use a good process, you get good results. Another statement, perhaps Mr. Perry talked about this, is that there's a state statute that passed out, everyone has it in front of them, it is Mexico statute thirty next thirty-one next forty-six. It's a piece of paper, and subsection B of that statute says a municipal making by ordinance prohibited distribution of possession of controlled substances, enumerated in subsection A, scheduled by Roman 02, Roman 03, Roman 04, but penalty provisions shall be the same as those provided for similar crime, for similar crimes controlled substances act. So, I mean, the state statute says quite clearly that any penalty that is passed under municipal ordinance can't vary under state law, and if it does, you know, it's an invalid penalty. So I wonder why we are asking the people to weigh in on something if the result would be something that's totally illegal. And the question that's going to go on the ballot doesn't really leave any room for doing anything other than do something which the state statute says we can't do. The question is, shall the Albuquerque City Council adopt legislation on immensity law to reduce felony for possession of marijuana? Or the state statute says we just can't do that. So unlike the red light ordinance or the ordinance that we passed, there's no question that we could be feeling. Here, we're asked, they're asked the municipal voters if they should weigh in on whether or not we should pass any legal ordinance, and I just think that's a proper question for us to be putting on the ballot. Now, I would have voted if the people who did the petition wrote that actually we had to require number under the charter, I would have voted to put it on the ballot. I had great concerns about the abortion question, I thought that was probably a good start on the courts, but the people went through the process, and they did what was required under the charter. The folks here just didn't do it, and for us to then put something, set something forth that is going to be clearly illegal, if we were to enact an order based on that resolution court, it's just something that we shouldn't be doing.
Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two last questions, or last ones, around various that Albuquerque, because it's a overall city, has differed from state law. And I'd like to ask, Len, is there a difference in what exists right now for marijuana prosecution or whatever, from state law?
Mr. President, councillor Lewis, you're asking about the marijuana ordinance the city clerk has, and we do have a current criminal penalty for possession of marijuana that does have some slight deviations from state law. Basically, the city's ordinance basically penalizes possession of marijuana with a penalty of fifty dollars for first offense, or the state law penalties up to a hundred dollars. Some of the second offense, the city law penalizes the penalty for about five hundred dollars and nine days in jail. The state law has a penalty of a thousand dollars in a year as well. So there is some discrepancy as it exists. I do have I do have a copy of the statute that was passed out, and I think this will be the way as well, so the preemption.
But to the point, right now we have practice that is deviating from the state, so to the last person's concern, we either have been complicit, certainly someone who might have known, that some of our procedures and practices that we have now also are in conflict with state, and maybe it would be the job of that person who goes with every single law we have, even though we're home state, and make sure that they're complying with state statutes. I mean, I'm asking a rhetorical question, because I don't think it'll happen. It'll only happen, of course, today, and affects the need, the concern, or the priority on that line of issues.
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, you know, it's an interesting issue, and, you know, as you've pointed out, we're into the preemption issue all the time, we have to eliminate in some way, if we do expect state law, sort of just thinking about it in a way that you would be presented, you know, you're a person who is cited or arrested for possession, and you're cited under the lesser penalty of city ordinance, you're probably not likely to be complaining of that six.
So you wouldn't say, I don't want to be arrested under this lesser charge because the state says I should be charged five hundred dollars and that you're in jail?
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, do you know that sort of announcing the requirement that's in charge of the issue?
Nice, okay, thank you.
Counselor Lewis. We still have to hear, we decided to speak, so.
Yeah, certainly, I wanted to draw this case in here, maybe read through the red light camera initiatives, that certainly was a choice that we made, this is a choice that we're making, and I think the issue of the, it's unfortunate, by the way, Mr. Davis and I, I want to make it very clear, I said this in the last meeting, that was a mistake, and hopefully get to the bottom of that, I hope that that never happens again, because that shouldn't have happened, so I'm together with everybody else on that. But this is, this is a separate bill tonight, this is just something, same issue, but separate question that we're faced with, and that is, we did to make this decision tonight, at least to go to the next level, that's what we're being faced with, whereas if this came to us in a valid initiative, and the people met the threshold, then we would not have the choice on it, and I would absolutely support that, because I support the process, and support the law, and support our people's ability to be able to do that, but because this is a decision that we make tonight, and that's why it's brought before us, and, you know, we also, you know, make the decision that I feel like is the right one also. And Mr. Davis, my colleague, seemed to think that I, again, that the questions were disrespectful to you, and they were, you know, police, that's not the way they were intended, and I hope we can continue to have honest questions and conversations, and I'm always open to that, so thanks for that.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Our next speaker is Rachel Mastas, followed by Barbara Rufus, and Ellen, who I'd be the last speaker.
Good evening, Counselors, and President Sanchez. You know, it is painful to come to these meetings and see the administration fall down, whether it's the planning director, whether it's the police chief who doesn't know how many officers are on the street, are you freaking kidding me? Now we have, you know, another person, and I'm not saying this is an incompetent person, but I'm listening to Mr. Davis say, simple correction of added information that was eliminated, have delivered the signatures that any of you could have gathered and found them to be correct. She may not have changed her standard, she may have changed her standard, but apparently errors were made. I don't know anything about the numbers, but I'm going to tell you that it doesn't matter, in our country now, people are voting to legalize marijuana across the country. We can get with the program, at the goals forum, the people who attended the goals forum voted to legalize marijuana in New Mexico, at the goals forum, the city process. So I'm just saying, you can get on the train, or you can miss the train, and I think what we really are trying to do is press the vote. We have a lot of young people who want to vote on this issue, and yet we don't want to listen to them, because really, we just can't be different than the state. The train is coming, we're going to be on it. You guys may not be on it, but the city is going to be on it, and if you gave people the opportunity to vote on this, they would vote yes. Thank you.
Last speaker is Ellen Lydon.
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, thank you. I'd just like to kind of, on the actual merits of the proposal that would go on the ballot approved, obviously, it's a step towards legalization, it's been hinted at, it's been pretty close to applying. Why legalization? Fourteen years ago, I was on the committee forming a juvenile drug court in Grand County, and we were talking about drug and alcohol use of kids in schools, and a representative of the school gave a talk about how marijuana was available in the school parking lot, in the school hallways, in the school classrooms. And somebody said, well, that's true of alcohol too, isn't it? And the school official said, no, we don't have a problem with alcohol. Alcohol is legal, it's regulated, it's hard to catch. If you don't want children to have marijuana, don't make it illegal. Legalize it, regulate it, it makes it harder to catch. Thank you.
This will be a plus. Over here in back on the bill. Any other questions? Counselor Garbunio, please.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think a lot of great information that you shared, I understand people's positions, I don't know why we would conflict the idea of whether or not we are tonight voting on whether legalization is going to happen here. This issue is pure and simple, the idea that we're sending it to the citizenry, the plebiscite, the able decider, they think this is a good idea, at that point, there will be a sense of whether or not the community is behind it. When they think that, it'll be voted on, and we'll know the result, plain and simple. This is not up or down, or bad or good, evil or sad, this is all simply allowing people to weigh in and make sure that their voices are heard. They were heard once, when they signed the dishes, and that was nullified, how could we possibly decide to nullify it again, by not allowing you to go through a simple, popular vote? This is something that we'll go on a proposal, put on ballot, people go here tonight, do just that, no other unintended hidden agenda is connected to this. And if people are willing to say, yes, citizens, we trust, if you know what you want, then let's go, get them to have, continue to vote. So I urge your support.
I know you're opposed, Counselor Garbunio, but I do have a disparate clarification. When this goes to voters, if they approve this, just like the red light camera, that does not become law.
It is advisory.
Right.
An advisory just means that it'll come back to this council, as this council decides to then form ordinance to comply with what, exactly what you said, what the community has asked for. But implicit, because the community is voting, they're saying, yes, look at this issue, and if it's a pro bono, if it's a people's favorite, the informant part of that is that they're telling us, you know, look at this and look at this, so that you can act in a way that is, you know, goes in with the way we think.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve P dash six. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, oppose?
No.
That carries on a five to four vote. We are now under R dash ninety-one, this is the election resolution. It's going to be following proposition, not authorization to voters of the city of Albuquerque. One, the proposition to amend the city charter specifying that appointment of the police chief and the fire chief will require the advice and consent of the elected council, that the chief of the police and fire chief may be removed by the council for cause. And number two, involve question for the issues of general obligation bonds and certain principal amounts for that property development purposes. I move it to pass. We have a motion and a second. We have three individuals that have signed up to speak, and we'll do that before we go to the amendments, Kadeninsky, Stephen Baca, and Art Tannenbaum. Five individuals signed up to speak on this agenda items, Art Tannenbaum, Kadeninsky, Sylvia Delengel, Harper Rufus, and Stephen Baca.
Yes, I really find the argument that something is better than nothing doesn't always, I did take into consideration the idea that, well, the IRO wouldn't have any checks or balances, but really, there's a reason that these people resigned from the police oversight commission. I strongly support the proposal to immediately suspend the operations of current police oversight commissions such as the GANs, pending the establishment of a new independent oversight process.
Thank you, Art Tannenbaum, Kadeninsky. Again, once you give us the call, if we please come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Thank you. As I was already saying last night, well, let me finish up my thoughts. We've had nine commissions, then, and after six, and three, now, last week, we're two, and a third, and one commission on the speakerphone. Come on, that was the joke, I know, I know, I'm getting in trouble, I have about four, five different complaints, but I don't want to face it, true. I, well, I believe the council also suggested heading eleven instead of nine. And also appointment from home district, I disagree. Let's take oversight citizen, oversight citizen, and we'll walk online without me. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Delengel, Harper Rufus, Stephen Baca. Then a few comments over here back in the door. Counselor Garbunio?
As Counselor Harris said, we're down to two PSC members at this point, and I agree that we need to move rapidly, I do hope that we can move rapidly on the internal bill, and also that we, that as part of that discussion, go ahead and implement the new body as soon as possible, hopefully not wait until the end of the year, but at present time, it seems to be the way to go, and I don't think we're really losing anything with the existing oversight commission at this point, and we can still have an appeals process, so I urge your support.
I'd like also to, Counselor Bennett, please. I support this legislation based on the findings of the Department of Justice, the current structure of the police oversight commission is flawed, it's been flawed for some time, and I would also commend Counselor Garbunio, Counselor One, for figuring out also the task force, they put under looking at forming a new police oversight board, but I think without this board, it makes it, we will work that much more diligently and quickly, informing the new police oversight board, and we would urge your support. We have a motion and a second on the floor, row dash fifteen, that substitute, all those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, oppose? That carries on a six to three vote. We are now on R dash eighty-seven, Counselor Garbunio.
Thanks, Mr. President, and it really is, with a lot of excitement that I talk about this, because there is an event that's going to happen in New York City on the twenty-first, and I'll be proud to be present at it, and it's going to be the world's largest climate change rally in the world. It is also coinciding with the time that the United Nations and New York City will be having a symposium on climate change. This really asks this country, federal folks, to work with the rest of the United Nations to make sure that carbon emissions are held to the lowest possible standard. It also asks that any country, since they'll all be there, that today is violating assumed and accepted levels of carbon dioxide, that they cease breaking those rules, assume the rules of the agreed to rules, by lowering their CO2 production. This is not instructive, this is informative, this is telling folks all over the world that the city of Albuquerque occurs and is supportive of making sure that carbon dioxide is not overwhelmingly, in fact, if you read the resolution, that talks about, you know, that we're at a critical measure, a critical point, at which if we don't react and start doing this, that we will be in a place where it will be irreversible. As I said, I'll be proud to be there, get it passed, and I hope that you do pass this, it will be read at this rally, and I have to say that my son has been very involved with this rally, and by the way, the tree doesn't fall very far from the apple, no, that's all right. My son's a lot of talking about all these things, so I'll be there to support it, he'll be reading this resolution to the entire rally. I don't have all four hundred thousand of them here, but it'll give me the opportunity to say that we support this.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, we have one individual signed up to speak, Harper Rufus, I think she's in the building, over here back in the bill. Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Garbunio, I'm going to support this bill.
Are there any questions? Counselor Garbunio, you close.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Counselors, colleagues, appreciate you supporting this. With that, I close, I urge your support.
We have a motion and a second to approve R dash eighty-seven, all those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, oppose?
No.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? That carries on a six to three vote. We are now on item G, Counselor Button, Penney, and Winter, R dash eighty-nine. Counselor Lewis.
Mr. President, please.
Okay, Counselor Lewis, go ahead. I'll move the bill. Move it, and you pass on R eighty-nine's designated FY fifteen general appropriations for the heading home program, and authorizing the remainder of the service agreement, Albuquerque heading home for case demand, and for heading home clients, and Counselors, this appropriates three hundred seventy-five thousand out of the one point five million that we have in this year's budget for these type of services. Heading home program's been a great success, this will keep it afloat for the remainder of this year, and again, as we've said before, we're going to have a lot to digest when the task force comes in with its recommendations. comes in with its recommendations and we also have expressed our support for the county program to address the citizenism issue at jail, that's a mean other one that we haven't considered, but this one has a clear demonstrated need and we can have an immediate effect in this case.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penney and Winter. We have two individuals signed up to speak, Dennis Plummer and Dorothy Otero. Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counselors. My name is Dennis Plummer, I'm CEO for Heading Home and I'm here to support this resolution and wanted to give you some of the data as to why I think this is important. The money that we're asking to be brought over for the remainder of this fiscal year is going to subsidize what was formerly funded by SAMSA. As you all know, a $1.5 billion grant from SAMSA was awarded three years ago, that expires in September. So we're asking for the remainder of this fiscal year to be funded so that we can continue what has been proven to be successful work. The packet in front of you, the first document is the Institute for Social Research, independent research on the success of Albuquerque Heading Home and the people that we've housed. The second page is a little, some of the linkage to the documents that show that this is internationally as well as nationally proven model that we are following. And the last, from Stanford University, is about collective social impact. These are the bases for which Albuquerque Heading Home began and it's an amazing collaboration. It's not just my agency, we're really only the backbone to St. Martin's Hospitality Center, Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless, Supportive Housing Coalition in New Mexico, among others. All of these are coming together to house numerous people and at a very high success rate, the Dorothy Otero will mention. I'll leave some of those stats to her, but at the closing, I did just want to publicly thank Marty Lewin and Counselor Benton for your work and also want to thank Counselors Penney and Winter for joining on and signing this important legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Otero? Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Dorothy Otero, the health coordinator for Albuquerque Heading Home. I have been privileged to work for Albuquerque Heading Home for the last three years, housing those that are most vulnerable in Albuquerque. So far, this, in the last three years, we cast 339 individuals. In addition to 56, family members were totaled 395. Albuquerque Heading Home, as Dennis mentioned, is a collaborative effort. Our outcomes include that we have seen an 81% housing retention rate at 12 months, a 64% decrease in jail costs, a 36% decrease in use of the hospital emergency rooms, and an 84% decrease in hospital inpatient costs. The numbers are what they are, but I could stand here and I could tell you the personal stories of the individuals that we have housed in two minutes, wouldn't do that justice, but I can tell you that on behalf of the clients that we have housed, that we've gotten off the streets and thank you, I'm going to camera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are back on the bill. Counselor Garden and Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the folks who just presented. I still remember that at this point, it was about, I think it was 15 below zero when we were out there surveying and it was the term, finding out where people were staying and where they were freezing. And it was very touching. We all have seen homeless folks usually at a time to appear out, but not at a time that they're out and that was a real eye opener to me, to know that people were living in those conditions. We all assumed they did, but it was really touching. Then move forward and Heading Home then grew to levels that the gentleman raised and presented. And the individual stories, it's true, the individual stories are amazing, they're touching, but also successes. I remember working with my wife, Melissa, and a very good friend of mine who's a social worker, nurse, social worker, Mary Zohar, who literally moved people into some of these facilities and some of these places, apartments, who then lived to a place where they were able to not only get home, but be home after some time. Even to the extent that I loaned my car to truck to move people. And those are the kinds of things that we forget on this day, that that's what happens every day, where folks are on the ground and are doing the work that some of us read about, hear about, but don't have the opportunity or the chance to live it. And I had that opportunity and I will cherish it forever and hopefully things will continue and I certainly will support this. Thank you, Mr. President and thank you, everyone.
Counselor Gibson and then Counselor Harrison, before we do that, Counselor Gibson, let's move to the thunder rolls and extend the meeting to about 10:45. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, oppose? Raise your hand, Ms. Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you. I guess my question for staff and maybe this is better for the administration is, how did this get lost or didn't budget or really scale? Why wasn't this fully funded?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, I think maybe Mr. Chap will be talking about that with the Family and Community Department as far as what the funding history was. Mr. Plummer pointed out how we were operating on a grant, a SAMSA grant, which is a federal grant from the Substance Abuse and Assistance Agency. I know I didn't do the acrimony justice, but I think we're kind of coming from transition from the grant. I would just, Chap, I'm impressed with that.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counselor Gibson. When the department constructs our budgets, it was back basically January of last year, so almost a year ago now, and at a particular point in time, the budget exceeds tax with obviously any extra money, any additional revenues that we get, including the budget at a particular point in time. And so we made a strategic decision, the department had a lot to build and include that in our budget request to help.
Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I guess you can say it if you'd like. I was just going to ask if the administration supports this, but I think this was an administration initiative, wasn't it?
Mr. President, Counselor Harrison, it was and, you know, I think a lot of people came together to deal with this issue and Counselor Garden, you were really touching the comment of when it began and kind of, a lot of public officials, including the mayor, counselor, were out there surveying this cold morning. Various folks within Family and Community and some other associated departments, including the police department, tried to come together, try to look at what program could have the most meaningful impact on acute and chronic homeless population. And they did that, it started, it was basically pitched to the federal government who agreed to fund it through a grant for $1.5 million. It's spoken volumes of the success. I think Mr. Plummer has hosted people from other jurisdictions, cities, other states and the like regarding coming to Albuquerque and look at the program. It's really a great model and I hope we can duplicate it in the mental health area too because I think what it strives to do is to provide seamless services around the totalities of the issues, but my thanks goes out to the counselors in support of the legislation tonight, the program overall and certainly Mr. Plummer and his staff in the department. They've done a really good job with this, so yeah, thank you, sir.
Counselor Garden.
Mr. President, I was missing, I'm actually, as the folks have said it, but I want to say it myself, but there were three agents on the part of the mayor who, I'm sure we consulted with other groups, but he was a real champion for Heading Home and I wanted to make sure that people understand that and in no way did I mean disrespect, but I know what you're saying. Most people know it, but I want to just repeat it again so that people know that this had the highest levels of support and I certainly thank the mayor and respect what he's done on this and other issues, but on this issue for sure. And my friend, Mary Zohar, is a psychiatric nurse.